Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 14th, 2022 Oshkosh Common Council Meeting. Please call the roll.
Erickson?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Muggerhour?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
He's somewhere under.
He's outside. I just saw him.
Wodzowski?
Here.
Paul Mary? Here. And Councilmember Erickson will lead us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we honor those who have come before us, including the original stewards of this area, the Minamni and Hochunk nations. May our decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember... Councilmember Wodzowski will join us along with Maddy Wiles for our proclamation Whereas the city of Oshkosh cherishes the value and dignity of each person and appreciates the importance of equality and freedom, and whereas all are welcome in the city of Oshkosh to live, work, play, and every family, in any shape, deserves a place to call home where they are safe, happy, and supported by friends and neighbors; and whereas the city of Oshkosh denounces prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, gender identity, gender expression, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical attributes as an affront to our fundamental principles; and whereas Pride Month began in June of 1969 on the one-year anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in New York City after the LGBTQ+ and allied friends rose up and fought against the constant police harassment and discriminatory laws that have since been declared unconstitutional; and whereas the city of Oshkosh appreciates the cultural, civic, and economic contributions of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, plus LGBTQ+, community which strengthen our social welfare; and whereas it is imperative that young people in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers and community leaders; and whereas despite being marginalized, LGBTQ+ people continue to celebrate authenticity, acceptance, and love. Now therefore I, Lori Palmieri, Mayor of the city of Oshkosh, do hereby declare June 2022 as Pride Month in the city of Oshkosh and urge residents to recognize the contributions made by members of the LGBTQ+ community and to actively promote the principles of equality, liberty, and justice.
For those who don't know me, my name's Maddy. My pronouns are she/her/hers. I, just starting this June, became the interim director of the LGBTQ+ Resource Center on campus at the University of Wisconsin Oshkosh. And so I would really like to thank the council and thank the mayor for this proclamation and this dedication to our queer and trans community, specifically our students as well and our youth. And I encourage everybody to continue to learn and to continue to grow what they know about the queer and trans community and making sure that we stay involved and that our campus partners and the campus community continue to strive to inclusive excellence and to make a home for our queer and trans people in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to say thank you to the mayor and council for this proclamation. As far as I know, the only openly gay member on this city council. Just thankful to have a supportive community. So encourage everyone to keep learning and growing as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move on to introduction of staff. Jody Lemmer, Management Analyst for Public Works.
So I'm going to ask Jody to come up and join us over here at the staff podium. Jody is a returned Peace Corps volunteer, having served her country teaching a variety of health topics, including malaria prevention and HIV/AIDS prevention in Zambia. Her educational background includes a Bachelor of Science degree in Community Health Education from UW-Lacrosse, as well as a Master of Arts in Political Science from Marquette University, where she was a Trinity Fellow trained in Social Justice Leadership. Jody has a couple of years' experience working entry-level positions for Fortune 500 companies, including Starbucks Coffee, Marriott International, and those companies, as well as a strong nonprofit background. She was previously a Planning and Development Specialist for the Housing Authority of the city of Milwaukee, after which she became a Legislative Aid to the 4th District for the Common Council of the city of Milwaukee, where she built relationships with over 25 departments and several organizations to better serve the downtown district's 38,000 constituents. Jody was born and raised in Milwaukee and is a proud Milwaukee school, public schools alum. She currently serves her new hometown as the Secretary of the Plan Commission for the town of Auburn in Fond du Lac County. I'm very excited to have Jody joining our department in the Management Analyst position. I think she's going to be a great asset to us and help us out tremendously.
Welcome.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
Anything you'd like to add, Jody?
Just thank you. I'm excited to be here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. We have a presentation this evening, the city facility study and needs assessment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Finance Director Van Gompo is available remotely this evening, and so he'll be doing the bulk of the presentation. As you were aware, we just had a presentation regarding our fire facilities and where we are with that. And those, as I had mentioned at the workshop, those have been incorporated into the overall facility analysis that we've done for all of our city facilities. Mr. Van Gompo, I asked him to make this presentation because as we went through it, there's really two specific goals that the council has identified in our strategic plan, and they've given me specifically some direction on it. One was, we need to address our facility needs. We've got a lot of pent-up demand for some facility improvements. And then, secondly, debt management, which can often be conflicting, but I think what we want to do is talk about how we can bring those two and reconcile those two goals that are very important for us. So hopefully with that, Mr. Van Gompo is available. Russ, are you there?
Yes, I am.
See, technology does work sometimes, folks. So, Russ, if you could just start with your presentation, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. This was not really a finance thing, but really a team effort, working with our team and general services, administrative services. And Mr. Urban has worked with myself and the departments to look at all of the facility needs facing the city. For a long period of time, I think facilities have kind of taken a backseat to some of our other capital projects, and we wanted to take a look, a closer look, at all of our facilities and try to determine a game plan and how we can come forward with a potential way to address some of the shortcomings in our facilities. I think we talked about facilities and the need to finance projects during the strategic planning process. So in working with Mr. Urban, we came forward with a list of projects. We tried to put them in place and prioritize them from a rating system of 1 to 5. I believe you would have gotten a copy of that page electronically from the city manager's office, and if you look at that page, it's about $65 million worth of capital projects that we need to address. Now, we've talked about the capital projects with our Long Range Finance Committee and certainly looked at, it's not feasible to do it all in the next year, two, or even five, but over a period of time, we need to try to address specifically facilities. Initially, we talked about a 10-year plan, which basically means that we would have to consider the potential of including about $6.5 million a year to address some of these projects if we were to spread them out over a 10-year period. So that's kind of the basic nutshell of where we're at. So I don't know if there's any questions or if Mr. Urban has any of the other, wants to talk about any of the projects specifically, but you saw the presentation on the Fire Department, which is a good portion of this, but there's also other needs in other departments that we've identified going out for the next few years. So with that, I'd open it up to any questions or comments that council might have.
Councilmember Ford?
Thank you, Russ, for this. Not to put you on the spot, and I don't expect to answer this right now, but will we get an estimate about, you know, what this would do to our debt limit, assuming we actually did this and did $6.5 million additional over the next 10 years?
That's the question that we started discussing with Long Range Finance, and I know that's an issue in front of council, is how do we do this and what is the impact? I'm working with the city manager's office right now to come up with a framework for future borrowings and how that might play into our projections on future growth, future equalized value, future, we have some debt ratios. The most common one that we've talked about in the past is a measurement of our debt to the state legal debt limit. The state allows us to go up to 5% of our equalized value. In previous budget discussions and at our first CIP, we can talk about how we might want to structure future debt issues. I've done some preliminary work on that, but right now, I think what we're looking for is a commitment from council that we try to make a concerted effort to include facilities when we start looking at our capital improvement plan.
So basically, that $6.5 million, how do we incorporate it into our plan? And we think when we do the CIP discussion at the July meeting, that we also invite the Long Range Finance Committee, and it sounds like the committee was very interested in that because they are, these issues are converging. So how do we average $6.5 million in borrowing? And with each project, it's going to be different, but if we set a 10-year timeframe to start addressing this $65 million facility gap, how do we do it? Russ, for example, showed me a model. The council's familiar with that spreadsheet that you enjoy playing with because you get to look at all the variables that go into what the debt is. And one of the goals that the council had set, once we presented it and Long Range Finance went along with it, was how do we get our debt cap down to 40%? And so I can show you a scenario in which that works, but a little bit of it is crossing fingers and hoping we get in that scenario that I looked at. It was like an average of 2.69% growth in equalized value. For the last three years, we have been rocking that. We've been able to hit that. The previous 10 years, we had zero to slightly negative growth through the entire decade. So pull out your crystal balls and tell me which one of the scenarios, is it going to be what we experienced in the 2010s, what we've experienced in the 2020 so far, which over the past four or five months, I don't know if I want to bet on that track record, but last year we had a growth rate of 8% or equalized value. Now, I haven't seen that growth rate in easily 20 years, so I'm not going to promise anything like that. But given the different scenarios, but the model said we can keep our outstanding debt about the same. It's about $130 million right now. That's our outstanding debt. When you do the math, it's about 40. What, Russ, is our debt limit right now? We're at about, what, 48%?
Technically, 51 or 52, guessing.
Oh, okay. All right. I was being a little more optimistic than you were. So what you can see, we hit our 50% mark, but how do we get down to 40? It's getting growth and responsibly managing our debt.
Well, thanks, Van.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Just real quick. Thank you for answering the question, and I know I'm just one of seven, but that's really important to me. We've done tremendous work getting ourselves from being an outlier on our debt limit in a bad sense to being an average place with our debt limit, and it's important that we stay there. Thank you.
Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Russ, Mark, before we get into that conversation, I'd like you to let me know where we sit with our, with our community peers on our debt and how we compare to our competing cities around us. I'm real interested to see that update. I know we lag some of our competing communities because of our debt load, so I'd like that comparison refreshed, if you guys don't mind.
To answer that question, Councilmember Miller, I did share with at least the Long Range Finance Committee after the meeting, the latest numbers that I have is actually 2019 numbers because it gets reported to the state and the Wisconsin Public Policy Forum does a narrative and a comparison, which is probably the most reliable with that and looking at our peers, but I can certainly get what I have out to city council members as well. And just to follow up on that, one of the other discussion points, and Councilmember Muggerhour can chime in on that, is that our Long Range Finance, while we laid out the example of spreading this over 10 years, quite honestly, you know, what is the sweet spot? Is it 10 years? Is it 12 years? Is it 15 years? That's going to be a policy decision that the council will have to make, but I thought it was realistic to at least look at spreading this over 10 years. But yeah, you're right. When we get into the CIP discussion, looking at where we want to go with debt and how we're going to get there is going to be a major point of discussion.
Thanks.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, to piggyback on Finance Director's comments, so it's not an easy task, given the Long Range Finance at the moment. How do we spend more yet keep our, you know, financial situation as strong as it is? It's a very tough balancing act. That's one of the reasons that we'd like to invite Long Range Finance to our first budget meeting in July. It just so happens it's the same night as our normal meeting, so it makes sense. For council then to give Long Range Finance some ideas of where they might like to hear some information, where they might like us to go with those topics, because we can go, you know, in 14 different directions real fast, but it'd be nice if they got some direction from all of us in terms of what you would like to see for some policies and some suggestions. Because as Finance Director mentioned, you know, it's 10 years, the right number, you know, looking at, looking at the numbers we have in front of us, $65 million, but yet listening to the fire study, the need study, you know, a big chunk of that is really due over 20-plus years. So trying to find that sweet spot, you know, of tolerance for debt, as well as trying to achieve some, some progress on some of these facilities. So it's not an easy task, and it ain't going to, it ain't going to be done quickly, but I think that's where we're at. We've given city manager, you know, some stiff goals of present us with information on how do we start addressing these things that have not been addressed for not even just years, but decades at this point.
Well, I think that it's really appreciated, all the work that went into the study, and it's been going on for quite some time now. So we had to identify the needs before we could start addressing it, I guess. I think there have been some things that anecdotally we knew, but now we have actual things to work with as far as data points, so.
And that's a great point, because I think we have to start having this discussion with the community because, you know, educating them, you know, I like to refer to the fact that we're really good, you know, middle children in the family because we've taken the hand-me-downs from the technical college, the university, the school district, and we're really good at that, but at a certain point, the old hand-me-down jeans wear out and you got to get a new pair of jeans. And I think that's in a couple cases, that's, that's the point. Some of these areas are like the station rehabs, as we learned, some of them are going to be just rehabs. Just give them, give them an extra 20 years because then we'll get 50 years out of the buildings. So we'll take a look at all of them and take a look at the options, and I think it's great that we're going to have Long Range Finance because having the two of you together will be a good discussion.
I just had a follow-up question, too, on the sheet that we got in our packet, which was in an email we got for the future city facilities cost. There are, I don't know, a few there that have no cost associated, convention center, convention center parking, the water park, the library, the leech, public works operation facility. So what's the scoop on, on those blank areas? We just don't have.
Various answers.
No, wait, missed, Mark?
Go ahead, Russ.
I over, I missed that during my introduction. I apologize for that. We know that there's improvements that are necessary in these facilities, but in most of these facilities, we're looking at alternative sources of revenue that are not general obligation debt for the community. I tried to focus on what would be reimbursed through general obligation debt, so a lot of these elements are being funded by user fees, by utility rates, or by contributions from the community through like the foundation and those type of things. So we wanted to keep them in the study, but in looking at what we needed to raise, excuse me, as far as general obligation debt, I did not leave them in that, that schedule, but I wanted to show you that they were a part of the study. We looked at the needs of those facilities, but they're not going to be basically covered by general obligation debt moving forward.
But they do still have costs for...
Absolutely.
Needs, right? Okay.
But we're trying to...
I get it.
Yeah, we're trying to show the debt...
Yep.
...impact on these. So, for example, the convention center parking, we have several hundred thousand dollars in that fund that the hotel collects as a nightly parking fee, and we've got a little bit of a war chest that's specifically for that purpose. So we would not come to you for general obligation borrowing purposes for those improvements. And that's just one example. The community foundations great partners with us on things like the leech and the pool, and so as improvements are needed there, we look to those funds at the community foundation to see if we can use those as well. And those are just a couple of examples. And I just had a discussion with Joe Furlough today, and he'll be coming shortly, and I think, yeah, expect a little invitation from Joe to go take a look at the conditions at the grand because we haven't had council on a tour in a while, and I think it's appropriate.
I'm going to guess Joe is going to walk us through the basement down there, so.
Yeah, it's a little scary.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Any other questions for Mr. Van Gompo? Thanks, Russ.
No problem.
All right. We'll move on now to citizen statements to council. Jesse, do we have anyone registered?
We don't have anyone registered under general comments.
Thanks, hon.
You're welcome, Russ.
Oh, please.
You might want to mute there, Russ. I'm guessing she cooked dinner.
The beauty of home meetings, yeah.
He's not going to live that down tomorrow at staff meeting.
I think he meant that for everybody in the audience.
All right. So no one is registered then for citizen statements? Okay. We'll move on to consent agenda. Do we have anyone registered to speak on any consent agenda items? All right. We'll take a motion in a second.
I'll move.
Second. Any discussion on consent? All right. Please call the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerhour?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wodzowski?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Stubbins.
All right. We will go on to new ordinances, and the first one is ordinance number 22239, update the bus loading zone and parking regulations adjacent to Oshkosh West High School on North Eagle Street and Southland Avenue. This will not be voted on this evening. It is a first reading. Do we have any discussion or questions on this item? We will move on to ordinance 22-240, approve zone change from suburban mixed-use district to suburban mixed-use district with a planned development overlay for property located on the south side of the West Packer Avenue. Tiny home development, Plan Commission recommends approval, and applicant requests waiving the rules. We do have citizens who are... We do. Oh, I apologize. Do we have a list?
Yes. Will Depius?
Will Depius?
He is.
If you could step right up here. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Will Depius, Board President for Oshkosh Kids Foundation. We're a 501(c)(3) that was started in 2019. Our mission's to provide crisis intervention to children and families, assist with transitional and affordable housing, provide strategic aid, and connect the partner resources for education, employment, transportation, and basic needs. The proposed tiny home village project that we have in front of you is a continuation of the work being done by our organization. The location was specifically selected due to its location near needs for services for the children and the families that we're proposing to serve at this site. It's close to a variety of partner agencies that'll be assisting at the location. It's near the industrial park for job opportunities. It's on the bus line for easier access around the community. Two-thirds of the families we work with don't have their own transportation and is walkable to the area schools. We view the project as basically a 32-unit housing development, except it's flat instead of elevated, where residents have their own space and don't have to share walls, ceilings, and floors. We'll have a full-time onsite manager, separate property management, and a full-time case manager from Advocap, and that case manager will be working with the families to work through the goals to improve their life from the time that they come here until the time that they eventually move on from the site. The Advocap's case manager will be working with the families, coordinating support and running the programming from a variety of nonprofit partners at the community center. Participation in the offered programming is a requirement to live here. The need in the community is fairly significant. According to the Department of Public Instruction, Oshkosh has averaged approximately 175 documented homeless children in the community over the last decade inside the public school system. So assuming we house two kids per tiny home at this site, you know, we can effectively house approximately a third of the documented homeless children in the community. We believe this project is also scalable and repeatable for other communities and being a model for others to deal with needs to provide affordable housing around the country. We're incredibly thankful for the city staff helping us through the process. They've been amazing to work with, anywhere from, you know, city manager Mark Roloff to Kelly Neiforth, Mark Lyons, Police Chief Smith, Fire Chief Stanley, to all the department heads and everyone else that is in every other department zoning Public Works that's touched the project. I'm just really appreciative for all the assistance. Thanks.
Mr. Depius, did other councils have any questions? I do have one. Okay. Just real quick, was this item that was in our packet, did you provide this to us? Did somebody tell me, the tiny home bullet points?
Yeah, the FAQ. Yep. Yeah, it was provided to Kelly, who distributed it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Do we have anyone else registered?
Yes. Cindy Bonard.
I represent the Oshkosh Kennel Club. We are a very active club, nonprofit, that is directly across where this proposed village on Packer Avenue. We've been an active club in the city of Oshkosh since 1968, and we've been at our location since 1980. since 1985. Our club contributes to numerous other nonprofit organizations, rescue clubs, use of facility for police dog training, shelters, 4-H clubs, national events, and recently, we're very proud, we just founded a $25,000 scholarship fund for the veterinary school in Madison. We've served the community at our facility since 1985 via teaching responsible pet ownership, educating the public on dog training and care, and hosting events which brings over 9,000 exhibitors through our doors each year. These 9,000 exhibitors contribute greatly to the economy of Oshkosh via gasoline purchase, hotels, restaurants, and shopping. When we decided to purchase land back in 1985 to have our building constructed, we decided on our present location based on the surrounding commercially-zoned properties to be best suited, and we were correct. We need to stay away from residential areas, after all, dogs do bark. As I'm sure you're all aware, being a commercially-zoned area and no sidewalks, particularly on the north side of Packer Ave, means a very low pedestrian traffic, which in turns gives our exhibitors peace of mind to safely leave their dogs in cars if they choose, with them open during the warm weather when we have events. Our commercial neighbors are busy during the day, Monday through Friday. The majority of our events that we host are in the evening and on the weekends. We've had a couple of questions regarding this at different meetings we've been at, and we've been told that there's going to be a police presence there to promote safety. And then we're told the police will be there on occasion to, you know, let the children know that it's better to know once before you call us, which, you know, we think is an awesome thing. But what it says is to have them there to promote safety, and we're very concerned is what is the anticipation of needing police presence there for safety? We're also concerned how is a four-and-a-half-million-dollar multifamily residential property of this, such as this, going to affect our property taxes and the value of our property across the street? We also do find it interesting that this is for the Oshkosh area homeless, yet the Oshkosh-Winnebago Housing Authority is not listed as a partner with this, nor are they managing it, rather it's the Wisconsin Partnership for Housing Development Way from Madison that's going to be managing this. And they also did say they have not ever done a project quite like this. I'm sure they've done some similar, but not quite like this spread out. We're concerned what the perception of this type of facility, which appears in the drawings and everything we've seen, to look almost as a compound fenced with surveillance cameras and police presence be. There's a lot of perception there that I think people will see.
And if you could wrap up your comments shortly?
Okay. The Oshkosh Kennel Club, we're not opposed to helping people when there's a need, however, constructing this in a commercial area, it's just not compatible for residents. We do hold prior to making decision on this facility, you take the adequate time to please get answers and questions and to evaluate how the future of this could impact local businesses. Also, when making your decisions, keep in mind what questions and concerns you may have if this was going to be next to your busy business.
Thank you.
I've got a question for you. Sorry, Mayor.
No.
I'm all for this project, and it's apparent to me you don't want it there, and that's fine. That's why you come up here. But I guess, I would hope with you having that presence there with the dogs and things, you could find some way to interact with the kids of the community and maybe partner with them in some way, or just get to know them. I just, I'm just trying to, I was kind of excited when it was there, and I thought, you know, having the Kennel Club there, and I'm sure those kids don't have dogs and things like that, so I would just ask that you would consider that maybe.
Thank you.
We can look at that.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else registered, Jesse?
Yes, Lou Shear.
Lou Shear.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I'm Lou Shear. I'm the homeless prevention director at Advocap, and our mission at Advocap is to create opportunities for people and communities to reduce poverty and increase self-sufficiency. So you could imagine my excitement of being able to work with a project as innovative as this one, and to provide a coach or case manager to work with the residents at the Tiny House Village. The Tiny House Village will use housing option for families with children who are currently homeless. That will be the priority. During our tenant selection process that we're working with the management company with and the owners, households will agree to do an assessment where they look at 21 dimensions of their lives and set goals to how things they want to make changes. Given opportunities, the power of the people to make changes in their life is incredible, and it's exactly why our programs work. And so they will set the goals to make changes in their individual households, and we're gonna engage Forward Services and FISC and other organizations based on the desires of the families there, along with trying to work with UW Oshkosh and school systems to provide tutoring for children and activities. It's going to be a healthy community environment for people who want to make change. And so they'll set the goals, and the coach will help people establish them and break those down into movable, measurable action plans. How are you gonna get this done? How are we going to do it? And they'll make connections with appropriate community resources, and they will be helping people remove the barriers as to why they haven't been able to do that on themselves. So there's a plan, and it's exciting, and it's an opportunity for people to truly make a difference in the community. So looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Jim Erdman?
Jim Erdman? And I'm sorry, I've forgotten to ask for address. No, you've got that recorded. Nevermind. Please, welcome.
Jim Erdman, DNJ Quality Construction, I'll be the project manager for this project, giving her approval. Very briefly, on behalf of one of the major donors, we'd like to thank the city and all of their major department heads. Coming together collaboratively on this project has been monumental. We're not compliant all over the board. So you guys are collectively doing something that doesn't happen in other cities. It will. It's going to become problematic more and more. And being able to write a model as to what it takes to contact your city manager, your village president, whoever it may be, and put together a builder and a team, the Kids Foundation, someone with a vision, find a donor, get ahold of all the department heads, and build 34 houses that are too small on one parcel of a community center that's not compliant, and figure out as a community how we're gonna find the money and the effort to accomplish this cause. It's been great. So if any of you have questions for us, reach out.
Thanks for addressing.
Thank you very much.
Mark Salzer?
Everybody, Mark Salzer. I'm here representing Lakeside Packaging Plus, which is over on Furnell and close proximity to the Packer Ave location. Lou mentioned community partners and reaching out to those resources. Well, that, we're in business 60 years, nonprofit, Dina and Oshkosh locations, and we want to partner with Oshkosh Kids to be a resource for those employment opportunities right down the road. I thought it was great with the transportation issues that can kind of sometimes hold up people from getting employment, literally a walk down the main street area passes by Hoffmaster, which is our customer for more than 45 years. So I see this real opportunity to connect the tenants of the Tiny House Village with all the businesses in the north industrial park. And Lakeside Packaging will just be one of those steps along the way to help them transition and improve their lives with that employment. We work with Advocap, Day-by-Day Shelter, Forward Services, World Relief, Oshkosh Kids, so I'm here just to support that effort, hope the council votes yes for the change so that we can move forward with the project. This would be great for Oshkosh. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's everyone for this item.
That's everyone? Okay.
I had accidentally, Mr. Hand is here from the management group. I had had him register under number 27. Because it's, we've got a zone change now, but then we've got a SIP and general development plan later, just if he wants to speak now, it might be appropriate since everybody else has spoken. It's completely his call, but just wanted to say that I told him to register under the wrong one.
Yes.
All right, thank you. I'm Chris Hand. I own and operate ACC Management Group.
If you could just speak into the mic, please.
My name's Chris Hand. I own and operate ACC Management Group, and we're located here in Oshkosh on Highway 44. What we do is we manage affordable housing, or commonly known as low-income housing, in all of the various programs throughout the state, which includes Section 42 tax credits, Section 8 income-based housing, rural housing, Section 515 program, the home programs, HP program, really all the programs that are out there. And we were approached to join this team as a community partner and provide the management, the daily management. We're really excited to do that. It's a different development than the norm in some real positive ways. We just heard from Advocap, the main partner, which I would term as wraparound services, which is essentially the piece that's missing in most affordable housing developments today. It was the first question I asked to Will when I was approached to join this team, and I was blown away by the response of how that's being handled on this project. I couldn't be happier to be here as part of the team. We think it's gonna be very successful in Oshkosh and hopefully repeated in many communities throughout the state and, quite frankly, the nation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I believe that is the end. So they're asking for, applicant is requesting waiving the rules and adopting on first reading, is that right?
Yep.
So if we could have a motion on the waiver?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerhour?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Stubbins?
Right, and a motion and second on the 22-240.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, if somebody from Planning Services, maybe Mr. Lyons or even Ms. Nyfor, just a brief question on this one. I know this is only zone change right now, and we'll be talking about the actual plan later. In terms of, is this the right use of this property? This is a suburban mixed-use already. If you could just discuss that a little bit, inform us, like, we don't know anything in terms of the property and its best uses.
Yeah, so to talk a little bit, start with our suburban mixed-use zoning district. Under the original drafting of the 2017 zoning change update, multifamily residential, which at the end of the day, this is a multifamily residential project, was done as a conditional use permit within the suburban mixed-use district. During some of the comp, excuse me, conditional use permit changes through the state law, Plan Commission and Council ultimately decided to remove that as a conditional use permit and do multifamily in this zoning district through the plan development process when appropriate. For example, the Swidersky Development down on the southwest side of town, suburban mixed-use zoning, same zoning district, multifamily that used this process. So in that terms of multifamily within suburban mixed-use, we already have done that here in our community, and we found it to be an appropriate land use when done appropriately, weighing the issues that are surrounding it, whether it be additional landscaping, fencing, how the property lays out. So from that perspective, this use is really just multifamily residential, fits within the character of that area and what we've already done within our city.
Perfect. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Well, I can tell you that the conversation about building tiny homes goes back to when I was an intern, okay, non-traditional intern, 2011, and I'm sure conversations even prior to that, but it certainly is exciting, a very exciting project, and it does seem that, you know, zoning does change over time, and we need to try new things. So I'm appreciative of this project coming forward. Any other discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerhour?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Stubbins?
All right, we will move on to ordinance 22-241, approve zone change from single-family residential nine district to institutional district with a plan development overlay for properties located on the west side of the 500 block of Monroe Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Is there anyone registered to speak on this item?
No.
All right, we'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this zone change? All right, please call the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerhour?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Stubbins?
New Resolution 22-242, resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $21,625,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation corporate purpose bond, Series 2022A of the city of Oshkosh, Winnebago County, Wisconsin, in such amount providing details prescribing the form of bond, awarding the bonds to the best bidder, levying taxes, and related matters. Is there anyone registered to speak on any of the bond items? I should just ask you.
No.
All right, can we have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Does look like we have Mr. Taves here from Ellers and.
You guys don't have to talk if you got under 1.5% for interest today.
Deputy Mayor.
If you wouldn't mind coming up, you're here, if you'd like to just give us a brief overview of what we're seeing in the marketplace and how everything that's occurring is impacting us.
Sure, well, as you know, we've had a lot of volatility in the market, so this morning we received bids on the first three of a total of five issues that will fund the city's CIP infrastructure for this year, as well as the decision you made to advance some of the funding for next year's CIP as well, to hopefully take advantage of rates that will seem comparatively low to where we may be a year from now. I also wanted to mention, I've got Harry Allen with me, and in particular, I wanted to introduce him because he will be here two weeks from tonight delivering the results of the final two. Harry joined Ellers in January and has been working closely with me on all these cities' financings. We provided a one-page snapshot of the sale results, and in case of the 22A, B, and C, the A and the B being the GEO bonds and the B being the notes, and the C being the stormwater revenue bonds, as is usually the case, we received a premium bid, meaning that the winning bidder is paying you more than the face value. That results in a re-offering premium that, based on state law rules we either use to reduce the issue size, or in some cases are required to put that in your debt service fund to help offset the first couple of years of interest payments. So the amounts you see in the final paramount column represent the final sizing, which differs from the agenda item in terms of the amount reflected, but the resolutions Bond Council provided, in which the city attorney received this afternoon, make reference to that lower amount. So simply adopting the resolution will have the effect of issuing the obligations in the lower amount. With respect to the GEOs, we received three bids each, the stormwater four bids. All three obligations were purchased by Robert W. Barrett as the low bidder. One thing I wanted to mention about the stormwater, and this has been the case for the last several years, is that Bear did purchase insurance at their expense. The rating on the GEOs was affirmed at a double-A3. The water and the revenue, water and the sewer revenue bonds, even though we're not selling those tonight, we've already got the ratings. Those are similarly double-A3. The stormwater is rated one notch lower at A1. Thus, we often see the bidders electing to purchase bond insurance, which gives the obligation an effective rating of a standard and poor double-A and allows it to price better. Basic proposition is the price of the insurance policy such that it's a worthwhile investment in return for getting overall lower rates. The rates you did receive, we've got the estimate. This was based on the pre-sale reports we had provided last month, and then in the green column would be the actual. So in the case of the GEO bonds, we were close to 1.5% higher than that estimate a month ago, again reflecting that volatility. Both the GEO notes, as well as the stormwater, came in very close to that original estimate, with the stormwater actually coming in a little bit less. One of the reasons that. One of the reasons that we saw the bonds priced higher is we've seen more impact in terms of interest rates on the longer end of that yield curve. In other words, borrowing money for a longer term right now is comparatively more expensive than borrowing money for a shorter term. And then the PNI, both in the yellow column and in the green column, again reflecting the estimate and the actual, and then you can see the difference in total PNI over the life of the issue. And happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I assume we're going to probably pay 3/4 to 1% more at the end of the month? Is that a fair...
No, I mean, as the city manager said on another item, you'll get out your crystal ball. You know, we've got a Fed meeting that's concluding tomorrow, so the markets tend to price things in in advance. So I think a lot of what is anticipated in terms of a final action tomorrow is probably already built into these rates, so, you know, hard to say what two weeks difference will make. But, you know, if I had to venture a guess, I would not think we would see that sort of additional upward market movement in that short period of time. But again, no one can have any certainty about where the markets may head.
Thank you.
Other questions on this item? All right. Please call the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution 22-243, resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $9,140,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation promissory note series 2022B of the City of Oshkosh, Winnebago County, Wisconsin, in such amount providing details prescribing the form of note, awarding the notes to the best bidder, levying taxes and related matters. And is there anyone registered on this? No? Okay, motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on 22-243? All right. Please call the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution 22-244, resolution determining to issue not to exceed $8,780,000 aggregate principal amount of stormwater utility revenue bond series 2022C of the City of Oshkosh, Winnebago County, Wisconsin, in such amount providing details prescribing the form of bond, awarding the bonds to the best bidder, and providing for the payment of said bonds and covenants with respect thereto. And I assume we have no one registered on this? A motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this bond item? All right. Please call the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution 22-245, approved general development plan amendment and specific implementation plan for building and parking lot additions at 532 Broad Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Is there anyone registered on the Broad Street? Okay. Motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All right, please call the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution 22-246, approved general development plan and specific implementation plan for a tiny home development located on the south side of West Packer Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. And I believe Mr. Hand spoke to this item earlier. Do we have anyone else registered?
Will...
Will Depes?
Depes and Cindy Bonner both signed up for this item.
I'm sorry, who was the second one?
And Cindy Bonner.
Cindy Bonner, okay, they already spoke, okay. Very good. Do we have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All right, discussion on this item. Councilmember Ford.
I just want to thank the applicant when this first came to Plan Commission a few years ago to be workshopped. I was really skeptical because there were so many details that needed to be worked out. But to your credit, you worked out those details, provided us with the information, and you did the work. So very excited to vote yes on this.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to echo Councilmember Ford's sentiments. You know, when the idea was first floated a while back, lots of questions, right? Lots of, and there should be questions. It's new, it's different, and it went through a process. And the process, you know, it isn't always easiest and isn't always the best, but in this case, I think we've got a very good product coming out of it. Even myself, as of two weeks ago, I was still, I had still unanswered questions, had some great conversations over the last couple of weeks with many of the partners in this project, and from the management group to the construction side, it seems like they're going above and beyond and creating a good partnership to make sure that this thing is a success and has the backing it needs to make sure, you know, it comes to fruition and has everything it possibly needs. So it's got my approval and a big thanks as well.
Councilmember Erickson.
Thanks. Just wanted to add, I think, you know, this is really adding and filling in a gap that we have for families within the city. And I think, you know, I'm proud to see this happening here, and I'm so proud to see all of the collaboration that's happened because of it, so excited for it.
Thank you, everyone that worked on this. I just have no words. I'm so excited. I can't wait for this project and those 34 families to have a place to go. Appreciate that. Okay, please call the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right, our next item is Resolution 22-247, approved commercial quadricycle license for Oshkosh Brew Bike LLC. Do we have anyone registered for 22-247?
We do. Tony Palmieri?
Good evening, everyone. Tony Palmieri, 212 West Parkway Avenue. So my understanding is that the council approved an ordinance to regulate the pedal pubs in September of 2018. And I went back and looked at that ordinance, and at that time, Mr. Davis was the Director of Community Development, and he said that when an application came in, it would be reviewed by community development staff and other departments, boards, and/or commissions as deemed advisable, such as the Traffic Advisory Review Board, Transportation, Public Works, Police and Fire Departments. So then tonight's resolution says that the application was reviewed by community development, the Oshkosh Police Department, and the Attorney's Office. I think, referring back to what Mr. Davis said in 2018, I think the Traffic Advisory Review Board should definitely look at this. And since 2018, our neighborhood associations have become a lot more engaged with things that impact them. So I would also ask the council to give the impacted neighborhood associations sometimes, some time to look at this, including Middle Village and River East especially, and I think there are maybe a couple of others directly impacted. I would also consult with Breakwater and other maybe recovery organizations that are becoming increasingly concerned with how we're just constantly putting more and more alcohol events into the city and just almost like normalizing it without any comment. So just some general concerns, just some specific concerns. If you look at the hours proposed, it says 10:00 AM to 10:30 PM. Now, and this will run partially on Division Street. I don't know if Saturday is one of the days that the pedal pub would run, but 10:00 AM till noon on Division Street would be a very, very dangerous time. That's during the farmer's market. There's a lot of foot traffic on Division Street at that time. There's a lot of cars parked there. So I would at the very least look more closely at that particular time period and what a pedal pub going down Division Street would mean. Secondly, you know, I'm certainly not a prude, and I appreciate that people enjoy things like pedal pubs and other drinking events, but it really is kind of frustrating that so many people in this city have worked for so many years to rebrand the city that it's not Sloskosh. And it just seems like as time is going on, I mean, the council later tonight is also going to be discussing again the designated outside refreshment area, which I guess is alcoholic drinks in public. We've got the pedal pub, where we're going to have even, I think, brews in the zoo in October. So it just seems like, pardon the pun, we're kind of like pedaling backward from where we thought the city was headed just a few years ago. Again, which is not to say anything against pedal pub. I know it's fun. I know people enjoy it. But I do think there are directly impacted communities, including neighborhoods and recovery communities, that should have some input on things like this. You know, for years, the website 247 Wall Street has ranked the drunkest cities in America. 12 out of the top 50 are in Wisconsin, all right? Oshkosh is persistently number five. We have 28% of adults that binge drink or drink heavily compared with a national rate of 19%. So we are well over the national average, you know, on that. And I think part of the problem is that we just keep normalizing drinking events without any kind of critical oversight of them. I do appreciate that community development has tried to make the pedal pub as safe as possible, but I took a little road trip around the proposed route today, and it does go through some neighborhood areas. I mean, there's a section on Jefferson Street that, you know, lots of houses, and I think at the very least, people who live there should be consulted. There's going to be a pedal pub coming down your street potentially three, four times a day, including, you know, daytime and evening hours, and there might be a lot of screaming coming from them. So I would just like to see the council just perhaps lay it over and give the Transit Advisory Committee and neighborhood associations, maybe the recovery community, some time to offer some input on this also. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else registered to speak on this, Jesse?
Daniel Brosman.
Daniel? Welcome.
Good evening, council. My name is Dan Brosman. I'm the owner of the Oshkosh Brew Bike. This is a 14-passenger pedal-powered eco-friendly bicycle that would operate two-hour tours or rides throughout the routes that were proposed, limiting time on Main Street as I figured that would be a request, and that was supported by some council from Mark Lyons here. This is a slow-moving vehicle. It doesn't go fast. There is an electrical motor to assist passengers who are pedaling. We would mostly be operating on Fridays and Saturdays. This would be most likely limited based on demand during the weekdays. But the goal is not to promote a drinking culture. It's to promote a fun new social activity for the City of Oshkosh residents, but also to attract tourism to our local area. In my day job, I work as the Director of the Small Business Development Center at EW Oshkosh, and I run the Entrepreneurship Center, and I support a lot of these businesses in our community, many that are right here on Main Street. And I would love to be able to offer them a way to bring more people to their businesses and create an economic impact for those businesses downtown. This bike is, there are rules, there's guidelines that would be strictly followed by the drivers of the bike. There would be, there wouldn't be any, there wouldn't be littering, there wouldn't be excess noise. This would be monitored by the drivers of the bike. It's currently being worked on and painted to look very aesthetically pleasing for the City of Oshkosh to match the branding, to support the area and the appeal that we wanted to have, being the brew bike that could also be for coffee-themed tours. So it doesn't just have to promote alcohol and drinking. Again, the big focus is on promoting our, as a new social activity and a fun way to entertain our residents and attract tourism to the area. So I'm hopeful you will consider this new activity, join us here in Oshkosh. I would do my absolute best to make sure that I'm safe and conscientious of our residents here in the city and do all I can to garner the support of all the community members around me.
Thank you. Is there anyone else registered to speak on this item?
No.
All right, if we could take a motion in a second. Mr.? Yes, if you could come back up, I think there might be some questions. Should we get a motion in a second to discuss first?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, now discussion, go ahead and question. Councilmember Miller.
Thanks, Mayor. Is this any different than I see the bikes in the other communities like Madison and La Crosse and those areas? Is there anything significantly different from your pedal bikes than the ones that my kids use in other communities and things like that?
No, no, this is the exact same. So the nearest one is on College Avenue in Appleton called the Social Station, and that's a very similar bike, but it has a little bit more advanced features. The bike that I have is actually purchased from Sturgeon Bay in Door County Trolley Pub and was operating there in that market.
How fast does it go on average? Is it 5, 7 miles an hour?
Yeah, it wouldn't be much more than that. And it's depending on people pedaling.
Okay.
With a little bit of a motor to assist those. Maybe might be a little bit...
Oh, there is a motor?
Yeah, it's a small electrical motor, primarily to help transport it from the garage location, which would actually be over at, there's a garage at 547 Main behind the farmer's market building, in which I am working with the business owner over there to use that garage location as a safe location right there in the parking lot for people to hop on and hop off.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Thank you. Could you speak just on, will this be disruptive to traffic? You know, like, how's that going to work, just to ease concerns from drivers?
Absolutely. So the goal was to limit time on Main Street so that wouldn't be a substantial issue. Seeing that we have single-lane roads here, it's a little bit different from College Avenue in Appleton with the two lanes. So that was why I was deciding to use kind of the streets parallel to Main Street, being Division and Jefferson, but also giving time on Main Street because that's the excitement field for the passengers, plus it creates awareness and promotes the bike for people that are at those establishments. So along the tours, there will be two to three stops along the way, and the last tour would end by 10:00 PM to allow for adequate amount of time for the bike to be transported back to the storage location.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ford.
My question's not for the applicant, so I don't know if anyone has any other questions for the applicant.
Does anybody else have questions for the?
I do.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Then I'll yield to Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, sir. So the thing that limits you is also, sorry, I do have a question for you. The thing that limits you in staying on Main Street is also the thing that's a little bit, it creates a small concern for me. So I want you to talk about the impact of the neighborhood, because Oshkosh is a little bit unique in that our Main Street's just, you know, our active zone of Main, it's just down Main, and then it's really, once you get past Parkway, it's residential on the back sides. And so you're going to be in the residential neighborhoods. So in terms of the impact, the noise, I know it says in here it should be no more than conversational at 25 feet. There's plenty of loud exhausts on motorcycles and cars that are plenty louder than that, but talk to me about the impact you believe that you're going to have in those spaces. Because the rest, it's going to be commercial, it's going to be mixed-use, it's a little different. Those are, you know, we've got apartments on Division, we've got single-family on Jefferson.
Yeah, absolutely, good question. And that's why it was a little bit tricky to design some of these routes while also keeping in mind less time on Main Street, but also keeping, being conscientious of our neighborhoods nearby. So ideally, if a route could be going down Division on the Parkway and getting onto North Main, we could limit time that on Jefferson, not having to go around and be in those neighborhoods. But while in those neighborhoods, the noise levels will be maintained, the lower level, the music will be turned down. There will be a max so that it can't go over a certain level. And we, and I will inform all the drivers that you have to maintain a considerable level of noise with the passengers. Any unruly passengers will be asked to leave immediately, and that's signed and agreed upon in these digital waivers that we have, and printed waivers that all passengers are required to sign prior to tour.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, I'd like to ask the city attorney if, based on the memo that was written to us, that this applicant meets all the... us, that this applicant meets all the requirements under our ordinance, correct?
Yes, he does.
Okay. Then I'll just say that I'm not prepared to deny a private business that's following the rules that were placed and passed by this body. If people want to, you know, revisit and change the ordinance, I encourage them to do so. Because, I mean, I do get the concern out there about excessive drinking in Oshkosh, but this is a private business following the rules we passed, so I'm comfortable supporting it.
And Councilmember Wojciechowski, if you'll just wait just a moment, because I have also a question. It's my understanding that the quadricycle is defined in state statute at 340.01 and that it references a 12-seat. Gentlemen referenced that this is a 14-seat. I don't know if that's accurate.
Can I help, Lynn?
Mr. Lyons? Sure.
My understanding, when we're working with the attorney's office, one of the rules, the state ordinance defines it as a minimum of 12.
Okay.
It's my understanding of how it was explained to me.
Okay. Thank you. I voted for this ordinance back in 2018 because it did sound fun, and it still sounds fun. But at that time, it was presented to us, it seemed to be more generally geographically referenced for maybe Main Street, around the arena, and there was a lot of language in the staff memo at that time about protecting neighborhoods and residential areas and that there would be certain steps that would need to go through. There have been changes since 2018. We have three new neighborhood associations, and these routes, these three routes that are proposed would actually go through all four of those. But none of those neighborhoods that I reached out to today had received notification of these routes. So I guess, you know, maybe that's something that we might think about. But I guess I also, I'm also concerned about the process in the review, that it include the traffic review board, because again, as was mentioned earlier, there are some areas that could be a challenge for navigation. And I'll admit, I watched the Atlanta accident that took place on Peachtree and, I don't know, Midtown Atlanta just last month, where 15 people were injured and several critically in the turning of the pedal pub and flipping over. Horrible accident, but it was very graphic and concerning. So I guess I'd like to know a little more about whether or not, you know, we might be able to reshape some of these routes. I'll go ahead and pass this back to Councilmember, oh.
My question was answered.
Okay. All right. Anyone else, questions? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney Lawrence, and through your review of this, simple question, hopefully a simple answer. Was it in the ordinance, when we created this, was it a requirement that any applications went to any specific boards and commissions? Or Mr. Lyons instead?
In the ordinance itself, it went to council in 2018. It referenced that it would be applied to community development, and then I think, as Mr. Paul Mary mentioned, it listed other departments and potential boards could weigh in on it if deemed necessary. I'm paraphrasing a bit, but it says, but that language is in that section. When the application came in, staff met with Public Works, Transit, Police Department in determining how to move it forward.
And I'll just, if I may, read directly from that staff memo. The application would be submitted to the Department of Community Development and reviewed by staff and other departments, boards and/or commissions as deemed advisable, such as Traffic Advisory Review Board, Transportation, Public Works, Police and Fire Departments.
Both deemed necessary. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Other council members have any questions?
I would like to just say to take the communities into consideration, meaning if you have to redo your routes or whatever, have you shorten them up, maybe take something down CP or somewhere not as built family up inclusive, look into that, please.
Absolutely.
Air on the side of caution with this. Thank you.
And I'd like to make a motion to lay this over until those four neighborhood associations that the routes are plotted through could have an opportunity to know more of the details since they weren't contacted by either city staff or the applicants. It would be greatly appreciated if that consideration could take place before these routes are approved. And I do have, I'm sorry, one other question I forgot to ask. How many loops per day are we talking for three different routes? Per route?
Well, there would be one consistent route, depending on what is approved, and this likely during the weekdays, no more than one, two a day. Most of the tours would be operating on Fridays and Saturdays. At most, that could be five tours, two-hour tours on a Saturday.
Per route? Five tours per route?
Yeah, because it's two hours for a tour with a 30-minute break in between, and then two hours from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00.
There's only one bike, though, so we can't operate multiple routes at the same time.
Okay, that's what I wasn't clear on. Sorry. So again, if I can have a second on a motion to lay this over until those neighborhood associations could be contacted and review the routes. A second. Any discussion on the motion to lay over? Councilmember Ford.
I'll be voting no on the motion to lay over. Discretion was built into the ordinance that was passed in 2018 by this body. If this body didn't like giving staff discretion to make that decision about who they actually speak to, they could have phrased it differently. They didn't. If we don't like it, we ought to change the ordinance. We ought not punish an applicant here who did nothing but follow the letter of the law. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I really enjoyed Tuesday nights when I thoroughly agree with Councilmember Ford. Thank you for that, because he said it way better than I was just going to say it. I can't support this because this is purposely only picking neighborhood associations, which, by the way, don't get any purview in terms of what businesses come into their neighborhoods. That's not how neighborhood associations interact with the city. I think if you wanted to lay this over to have traffic review, reviews, it'd be completely different conversation maybe amongst this council. But laying this over specifically for four neighborhood associations to weigh in is inappropriate, and I can't support that.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I get so much feedback on how difficult it is to do business in Oshkosh, and this applicant has dotted the i's, crossed the t's, he's followed everything to the letter of what our previous body has done. So I guess I don't feel comfortable whatsoever asking him to go above and beyond what any other applicant would do for any other business. So thank you.
All right. Please call the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
No.
Hooverhour?
No.
Hanson?
No.
Miller?
No.
Wojciechowski?
No.
Aye.
Lost.
That is on the motion to lay over. I'd like to introduce another motion to lay it over for the specific purpose of including the traffic advisory board, as was indicated in 2018. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion to lay over for the purpose of allowing traffic review board to review the application. Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Can I ask city staff why they weren't advised? I'm sorry, this isn't a micromanaging question, I'm just curious if there's an answer.
As Planning Manager Lyons indicated, we did work with all of our different departments, including transit, and at that time, there were no red flags as far as where we thought there would need to be further input from some of the boards and commissions. So that's kind of why we went the direction that we did.
And I'm sorry, did you say transit or traffic?
Transportation, sorry. Yeah, transportation.
It would be the traffic and parking board.
Yep.
Oh, I see. Mister.
Yeah, I think we just had, you know, a department-level review of what was applied for, and as other departments have said, it seemed to match the letter of the ordinance. If council wants traffic to look at it, obviously, they certainly can. You know, we're not opposed to that. But based on the routes and the ordinance, it felt like it was acceptable based on our policies. But again, if council feels traffic should take a look at, I'll certainly bring it to the board and see what they have to say about it, but... I have a question, Jim, for you. So if 12 people on their own bikes went through these neighborhoods and they were drinking beer on them, it wouldn't come before your board. Is that accurate? Right. I would assume so. So I just, okay, thank you. Yeah, and based on the routes, I mean, just from a transportation standpoint, and this is, I'm not as involved on the neighborhood side, but personally, for traffic and transportation reasons, I prefer they be on Division and Jefferson as going down Main Street. You know, as you know, our Main Street's pretty narrow, and it's designed to be pedestrian-friendly. So I would think it would be better routes for a transportation standpoint, but I understand there's neighborhood concerns. But that's just from a traffic standpoint.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. They followed everything that we put in front of them. We have a lot of trust and faith in our professional staff, and the requirement of the ordinance says it may, does not say it shall. Had council saw fit, they should have included the word "shall" instead of "may" or "could." And there's a difference, and in legal terms, it really matters. So had the body decided that it should go to a board or commission for review at that time, as Councilmember Ford alluded to earlier, that would have been good for them to do now. I cannot and will not hold a applicant up to a different standard just because we'd like to. So I can't support this. It's plenty within our purview to send it to them if council would like to, but I won't support that. Thank you.
All right. Please call the roll.
Erickson?
No.
Ford?
No.
Hooverhour?
No.
Hanson?
No.
Miller?
No.
Wojciechowski?
No.
Paul Mary?
Aye. All right, we'll come back to the resolution. I guess, one last thing, I'd just like to remind council that in our strategic plan, we talk about strong neighborhoods, and we've spent a significant investment in our neighborhood associations, and we're now at, you know, over, I think, 20. It seems that sometimes we're walking the walk, or we're talking the talk but not walking the walk, and in this case, I think just moving forward, it would be appreciated, again, if those routes can be at least notified, if not consulted, before submitting the application, as was the original spirit of this ordinance. So if there's no further discussion, please call the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Hooverhour?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
No.
Carried six.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
All right, we're at Resolution 22248, Provide Recommendation to Wisconsin Department of Transportation for Jackson Oregon Street Bridge Design. Do we have anyone registered for this item?
Yes, we do. Kurt Keppler? Keppler?
How do you spell it?
Good step forward.
Good evening. My name is Kurt Keppler. I live at 1726 River Mill Road, Oshkosh. I'm one of the managing partners of City Center Associates, which owns the City Center Mall. I'm here to discuss the location of the bridge. Just to give you a little background, since we've owned this, we've invested over $15 million into the property, rehabbing it and attracting a major group of worldwide and nationwide tenants. We took an aging mall, converted it into a retail and business center, and there aren't many malls in the country that could share the success that we've had in converting our mall. At times, there are approximately 2,000 people working there. The location of the bridge is paramount to the existing of our property. It runs all along the Jackson Street side. It fronts the water. It's going to be very critical to us as to where the bridge is located. The Jackson Street entrance ramp is also critical to our existence because it is an entrance-only ramp, and it's the only way we can get fire and emergency vehicles up onto the second floor in case of an emergency. The Jackson Street entrance to our property is also critical as it serves Beckett's Restaurant, our Center Court area, and 20,000 square feet on the water. We currently completed an interior demolition of another 25,000 square feet for a potential tenant that would also be on Jackson Street. The best-case scenario for us would be to repair the existing bridge. It's 25 years more of existence. It's the least impact on the environment, it's the least impact on the city, it's the least impact on disruption of traffic, and I believe it takes the shortest time possible to complete the work. If that isn't available to us as an option, which it looks like it's probably not going to be, I would like to share with you some concerns about the design and potential impact it'll have on our property. Can you put a document up on the screen?
From there?
Well, on the TV.
Can one of the staff members help with the projector?
Is that possible?
Right. Right there.
It's not set up.
Oh, it's because the regular cameras are down. That's connected to...
No.
I'm sorry, it doesn't appear we can accommodate that right now.
Okay. Do any of you have your packet that was from DOT in front of you?
Yes.
Okay. Would you refer to alternate J1 on the proposal for the new bridge?
Staff may have that while you're talking, but they may find that.
Got it?
Yeah, and they may find that.
Okay. If everybody, should we wait to see if they can find it?
Go ahead.
Okay. If you look at J1, it's called the Off-Alignment to the West Raise Clearance with Both Riverwalks Underneath the Bridge. With this design moved to the west, it gives us more space in between the big approach to the bridge and our property. It also accomplishes most of the needs that the proponents of the bridge have approved and want, including the riverwalk underneath. If you move it to the west and you hook up Jackson Street, we could still use our ramp. If you look at the, it's kind of hard to disseminate, it's the darkest line that goes east to west. That is, that's a picture of the ramp going up to the second floor. If we can take that entrance and expand it onto grade level, we can include in that area an entrance to our property. This is not shown on any of the DOT drawings. They have an entrance, proposed driveway, which you'll see to the south. It looks like a mushroom. By our estimations, that height is 15 feet from our grade level. If you look at a 15-foot drop and you have one foot of drop in 150 feet, you need 15 feet of ramp. And 120 is not anywhere near, and I think James can weigh in on that, to code, it's way too steep. So... So we propose that you eliminate that parking driveway and let us have our parking back because it takes away a significant amount of stalls and parking is very critical to us. And at the Jackson Street entrance to the ramp, expand that to the south so we can have a single entrance which services the mall, ramp, and our parking lot and Beckett's and the center court. It's the least invasive scenario for us. We understand that the bridge has to be done. We pretty much are under the assumption that fixing it for 25 years is probably not going to be something that's on the calendar. But if you agree to this, and I know this is only a recommendation, it allows us to continue and operate our property with the minimal impact that the bridge is going to cause us. And we're just looking to protect our property. And we've invested a ton of money in the city. We bought something that was completely rundown, with 65% vacant. We had a $75,000 first year, first month heating bill, and we have turned it into a success. And it took a lot of time and a lot of investment. So I'm asking you that to use this proposal to refer back to DOT, and maybe they could change this drawing to facilitate the entrance to our property. Any questions?
Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you very much for coming, Mr. Kepler. I appreciate your time. Would that entrance that you're talking about, since the ramp is only up, correct? The entrance to break off into the Beckett's parking lot only be in entrance and then use that underneath, the part that goes around the, like, the ramp to get out? So it'd be a one-way flowing parking lot?
Well, what you're showing here by the drawing...
I'm talking about what you were just saying, though.
Yeah, that would be eliminated according to this drawing. It could be used as that. I don't know how you'd be able to control the access of people leaving at night. A lot of people use that now and go around underneath the ramp, but some people don't. They just go right onto Jackson Street. So we could make it one-way, we could arrow it, we could put signs, but I'm not sure that would facilitate everything.
But do you have any objections to that, if that were to be a part of, like, a case?
No, if you could figure out a way to hook this back up, and right now, that area enters right onto Jackson Street. So if you could expand that to the north to pick up that roadway...
Just to push it into the parking lot, so you've got one...
Okay, let's, let's let this gentleman finish his comments. Do we have anyone else registered to speak on this?
James Larson.
Okay, because if you would, Councilmember Hanson, just let us get this motion on the floor, or this item on the floor for discussion before we're back and forth.
I think he's yielding his time to Kurt, so, yep.
Okay.
I don't, what do you want me to do?
No, I'm asking Councilmember Hanson if she'll wait till we get our motion on the floor before we do the back and forth. If you could, go ahead and finish, sir.
I'm basically done.
Okay.
Courtney, I agree with you. If that could be done and they could figure out a way to design to let us get back out on Jackson Street, I think we'd be all for it.
Thank you. Okay, so if the other gentleman yells that we can have a motion and a second, then we can get this for discussion.
Motion.
Second.
All right, please proceed, discuss. Courtney Hanson, please.
Thank you for your time.
Kurt, can you stay up there for us for a minute? James, have you, have you seen this?
Councilmember Miller, it was, it was Councilmember Hanson's turn.
We're good.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So James, have you, have you seen or been aware of what Kurt has proposed here, what Kurt and Jim have proposed right now?
No, I have not had a chance to see it. I was just trying to follow along with Mr. Kepler as he was describing it, as I was looking at the map on my screen.
So if we back up, if J1 goes through as-is, they're going to lose the parking ramp, the access to basically, at those elevations?
No.
No.
No?
Okay. Okay, all right.
That's, that's my question. Thanks.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, if, people will bear with me here, been thinking this through, and I know there's been a lot of noise about the issue, so I just want to walk through the facts as I understand them, so people know where I'm coming from here. The broad issue here, I think, is we have three basic options. I think we have to have a discussion about the specifics, but 30,000-foot, I think, is really important here. Rehab the existing bridge, it shuts down the bridge for a year, gets us 25 to 30 years of more life out of it. State maintains ownership and cost of operations, and the state pays the cost of the rehab. We can build a new fixed span bridge, shuts down the bridge for two years, gets us 70 to 75 years more out of it. In this case, ownership and operations are moved to the city, state pays the full cost of the new bridge. The third option is the lift bridge, and if you look at that, that would basically require the city to take out $30 million in new, probably debt, I suppose, doesn't have to be debt, but we have to pay above and beyond what the state provides. To me, that's a non-starter, not to mention the operations cost is much more significant for a, for a new lift bridge. So pros and cons of the rehab. I think it preserves the status quo for the, for the city center, and I very much appreciate just an individual coming up here and just being open and honest that it affects your business negatively. You have a right to share that, and I'm glad you did. In public comments, that's where the support for the rehab option has come from, the city center folks. Has no upfront cost for the city, no additional operation cost for the city as the state maintains ownership. There's a lot of cons, though. I mean, we can look outside and we can see the bridge has obvious problems. I don't know if anyone else went over it this morning, but you couldn't. But that's, let's assume that's a one-off issue. There are still significant safety concerns with the status quo option. The DOT, and I'm quoting from the report here that they shared, and that's public, everyone can look at that, they determined the vehicle crash rate is higher than statewide averages for similar roadways than the current bridge. They have a variety of situations with the bridge that make it very dangerous for pedestrians and bicyclists. And if you ever have biked across that bridge, you are well aware of the fact that it feels extremely, extremely unsafe. The riverwalk, it's a break in the riverwalk, you have to cross it mid-grade, which is a safety concern, not to mention a continuity concern. And then the approach sidewalks have settled and present a tripping hazard. And I think that's important to point out, that this is not just a situation of us finding the lowest-cost option, there are significant safety concerns. Time is a big issue here. We're going to have to replace this bridge in 25 to 30 years if we're lucky, and, excuse me for being a little skeptical when we're saying that, yeah, we'll just rehab that bridge, it doesn't work right now. But I think the bigger issue that Mr. Robby pointed out in his report is that if we wait 25 to 30 years, we're going to be in the same timeline for replacing the Main Street Bridge, possibly other bridges. Not to mention, there's no guarantee, the state commitment to helping fund a replacement is going to be there in 25 to 30 years. So let's talk fixed span. Pros, creates a fixed crossing, that improves police and fire response times, and if we sat through that presentation earlier today, we know one of the things we're struggling with with our fire department is increased response times. I think we have to seriously consider anything that can help address that issue. It presents no upfront costs from the city, the state has committed these funds. It addresses the safety concerns I just mentioned for bike and pedestrian traffic. And then it was recommended by four separate boards and commissions. So some of the critiques out there that, hey, no one's had any say on this, I just don't, it doesn't hold water for me. And we had four different committees, Bike and Ped, Sustainability, Plan Commission, and Traffic and Parking Advisory Board, all recommend a fixed span bridge. The operation cost for a fixed span bridge, they will be the cities, that's significant, that's important, but it's going to be minimal for the first 25 to 30 years, which is the same timeline that we would have if we rehabbed the bridge. Some of the cons, it's taller, right? It's taller for boat traffic. Sightlines are going to change, and as explained by Kurt, traffic patterns will change. The businesses at the city center don't like it because they're going to be impacted by it, that matters. The city will be responsible for the bridge. That's the biggest, the biggest unknown for me. Cost of operations may be minimal for a while, but that's still ours, that's a significant policy change. So saying all that, I want to address some of the critiques that have been circulating online. First, is this just the state pushing responsibility to the city to get off the hook for owning a bridge? At the risk of reading too much into internet comments, which is always very dangerous, I think the argument being made here is that a new bridge is paid for by the state, but long-term, because of the operations cost being passed to the city, that we're going to be on the hook, that's going to be more expensive for us. And I think that's a legitimate concern, but I want to reemphasize that the fixed span is the lowest cost, lowest maintenance option, excuse me. If it was a new lift bridge, I'd be much more concerned about that. I think the bigger discussion point here is that all signs point to this bridge having to be transferred to our ownership at some point, whether it's today, whether it's 25 years from now, it's going to happen. I had a brief conversation with the city manager earlier today, and I was in complete agreement that that's not great policy, that local government is in charge of these bridges now, but that's a state issue. I think we should advocate for that, but it doesn't mean we can ignore the reality in front of us today. Other thing I read online, that we're being tricked into thinking that we're getting a free bridge and we're all excited about it. Well, of course not. And this is where I'm going to get really boring, if I'm not boring enough here, but fiscal federalism, right? The state paying for the bridge doesn't make it free, of course not, but just like ARPA funds, shared revenue, state highway aids, right? We take all those things. Those things matter from an operational standpoint for our local government. We all pay our local property taxes, but also we pay, you know, our state and federal stuff, and the idea is that some of those funds will come back to fund projects like this. Yeah, nothing is free, but there are operational concerns here. Having the state cover the cost is very relevant, it means that we don't have to take on new debt or take money away from other city projects to pay for. So part of this responsible financial planning, in my opinion, is being strategic when opportunities present themselves, and we have an opportunity in front of us. So is the rehab option the lowest cost and hence the most fiscally responsible option? I saw that rumor floating around. Thank you for providing this, some source documents from the state, Mr. Robby, and it's in our packet here, that really went through the long-term lifecycle costs here, a lifecycle analysis. And when you take into account the lifespan of these bridges, the fixed span is significantly cheaper. To quote the DOT report, "In all analyzed cases, despite changes to discount rate and initial cost, replacement with a high-level fixed span was found to be the least expensive." Now, there are non-fiscal issues to consider: impact on private business, improved safety of the new bridge, the unknowns around shifting ownership to the city. I'm not saying we should, we should ignore those, but we can't pretend like this is a fiscally irresponsible option when the numbers tell us otherwise. I guess the critique that really, really got me going here is that this statement that most of the support for the fixed bridge is somehow us as a council or city staff just choosing the path of least resistance because we lack will or vision, and that's completely the opposite of what's happening here. Yeah, planning can be a little bit boring, I get it, but building a new bridge is the definition of forward-looking. A new bridge lasts the longest, gives us the most financial flexibility at the local level, improves the quality of life, the quality of city services for fire, police, improves safety for pedestrians, is the best value for taxpayers, it prevents this disaster in 30 years where we have multiple bridges out at one time. So I know there's disagreement about this issue, and I think there's, right, every Oshkosh resident has a right to disagree, every member of this council has a right to disagree with this conclusion that a fixed span bridge is the best, best option for us, but that doesn't change the facts that got us here. And to the point that was brought up by Kurt here, and I apologize, I forgot your last name. Don't mean to, Mr. Kepler, don't mean to be disrespectful. I do, I do think, yeah, big picture, fixed span is great, but we should do everything we can to mitigate the impact on the city center, and if that means choosing J1, that is also, has all the benefits of a higher, higher bridge, but it shifts off and lessens the impact, I'm all for exploring that. I just think it's important that we give city staff and the DOT broad direction the way we want to go, and I think I made it obvious the way I think we should go. So thanks for listening to me here.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, Mr. Bertrand, would you mind stepping up? I've got two brief questions and I've got some thoughts, not as long as Mr. Ford's, but I've got some thoughts. I'm not asking you to weigh into politics in any way, so I'm going to preface it with that. When did the state decide to change state statute, I guess, right, in terms of who's going to own a bridge after the state refurbishes or replaces it? When did that change?
It was back in 1989.
So, okay.
And it has been applied to other communities, Menash is going through it right now with Racine Street, Green Bay has gone through it, Two Rivers, so it has been applied a number of times.
We'll leave it there. We're going to leave that one there. That's all I got for you.
I do.
Nope, I got, that's all I have for him.
Oh, okay, so you're going back to...
Yep, I have, so, for the longest time, I've been, I've been on the fixed span bandwagon up until about the last 48 hours when I really thought about this a different way. And so this discussion's really going to move me one way or the other. The impacts on business are extremely important to this body, they have to be. Now, I'm appreciative of all the boards and commissions weighing in, and that they've weighed in in the way they have. It's uniform and it's unanimous, they want a fixed bridge. It's on us, because it's not on any of them, to weigh the impacts on the broader community and on the business community as well. Each one of those boards and commissions weighed in on their purview, how it affects the things that they do, traffic, traffic patterns and traffic impacts, Plan Commission in terms of best land uses, all those things. So we have to make sure that we're hearing the business beating on the impacts it has because these are not things that can be easily undone. So as I'm listening to Mr. Kepler, he talked about J1 being a possible option or modifying J1. I think what we're really talking about is M1 or M2, if you guys want to actually switch to that. If we don't have to offset this thing so much, it's not as drastic in terms of the offset. We don't, J was actually put on the board so that we could do this all in one, in a one-year instead of a two-year construction cycle, is that correct?
Correct. The other thing I would point out, J1 is a replacement lift bridge, it is not a fixed bridge.
Yes, the alignment at least, in terms of the timing, too, to tear down and rebuild, can do those simultaneously. If we did M1 or M2, or at least gave guidance to do a version of M1 or M2 to city staff and the city and let them work with the landowners in terms of how it impacts specifically that parking ramp, I happen to drive up and down that parking ramp on a regular basis. I know how important it is just from the safety side of it. I think it checks a lot of boxes in terms of achieving a lot of the objectives that Mr. Ford laid out. It recognizes the massive impacts that a, one of the C versions would have in terms of disconnecting access to Jackson Street from your property, that's a huge impact that cannot be lost in this conversation, that it basically cuts off the main entrance to several, not just a restaurant, but several businesses in this, in this city center mall. So I think honestly, either M, a version of M1 or M2 seems like it may be a good compromise of interest in terms of making sure that we've got a bridge that, that checks all the boxes for us and addresses the needs of a significant community partner, in my opinion. I'll turn it back.
Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Thank you. I have a question and just comments, and maybe this, I don't know if we can answer this, but you mentioned other communities who are going through this process or have in taking over ownership. Do you know, have, for them, have the costs been significant with them taking ownership in terms of like the maintenance and whatever else responsibilities they take on?
I don't have the data for the other communities as far as them assuming and what those have been.
Okay, that's all right. And just comments, I think, after hearing Councilman Ford say his statement, I agree with him, I would like to see the fixed bridge. I just hope, as these comments were said...
Excuse me, just meant, so we've got a public meeting here.
I'm sharing the information.
Deputy Mayor, if you could rejoin us, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Wojciechowski.
One of the concerned parties, Madam Mayor, if you could, you know, update us a little bit.
Well, right now, Councilmember Wojciechowski has the floor.
Yes, fixed bridge, fan of that, but I do, do share the concerns that we need to make sure that, you know, we're not having a detrimental impact on those businesses that are around there. So I'm, I don't really have, you know, we need to do this, it's kind of just, I hope we'll work with these businesses to make sure that we're, you know, having that compromise, those talks, so those would be my recommendations. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, did you want to continue?
No, no, I don't need to share anything.
Since it's a public meeting, we want to make sure everybody gets an opportunity here. So I just have one question really for Mr. Bertrand, and maybe this was already like eliminated as an option, but one of the alternatives that's not listed here is kind of one step behind, do nothing. Was there any discussion about removing the bridge?
It was mentioned, and within the first couple weeks, I mean, it was dismissed from the city's standpoint that they felt there was already development around the bridge, so to remove the bridge as an option was not something that the city wanted to pursue. And this was back in 2015.
Yes, it's been quite a while. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, do you see any problem in laying this over for another two weeks? I mean, are we under any type of deadline where, where Jim and Kurt can get with James and feel a little bit more comfortable with this? I mean, they are a significant community partner down there, huge investment for us and a, and a great partner, so.
I guess I defer to Mr. Bertrand, that Mr. Bertrand asked that... I guess I defer to Mr. Bertrand, that Mr. Bertrand asked that, the DOT asked that we get some input to them at this meeting. So, Bill, can we lay it over?
I think part of the issue was Mr. Bertrand was not available June 28th.
I guess, I think, I think we need to lay this over another two weeks, so, James, you and your department can get with Jim and Kurt and, and find out if there's a workaround for all parties here.
Are you making a motion, Councilmember Miller?
Yeah, I just want to, before I make the motion, I want to know what, how that impacts the timelines here.
From the timeline standpoint, it would not impact the overall project. If we could get a definite decision from the city and a vote in two weeks, it would not impact the overall project.
Perfect, then, thank you, Mayor. I will make a motion to...
Can I, before you do that, can I address?
Sure.
Okay, Matt was kind enough to give me the M2 and the M1, and if you, if we look at these, there's possibly a hybrid in between them, so I think it's really critical that we meet with James and the staff and get some comfort level, because I don't want this to get into something that's not good for all of us. We've had a great relationship with the city. I don't want to jeopardize that. I think if we work together, we can figure out how to do this with the least impact on us and protect our property, prosper and pay more taxes.
Perfect.
Thanks, Kurt.
Thanks.
Councilmember Miller, can I just clarify then?
Sure.
So the motion to lay over would be until what date? Because Mr. Bertrand is not available on June 28th.
Not at this time, I don't anticipate.
And I'm not either.
I could try to rework, but.
I think from a staff standpoint, we would have to try to fill in for Mr. Bertrand at that point.
Okay, perfect. Then I'll make a motion to lay this over to June 28th.
Okay.
Discussion on the motion to lay over.
Could I just ask that if, you know, new design, something comes of this conversation and changes are made, that we're just notified in advance so we can have time to just look over it before we make a decision whether we support any changes or not?
Good, Madam Mayor.
Such a staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure if this will help or not help your decision on this, but, Mr. Bertrand, a question, in terms of how specific of a recommendation do you need? Because this project isn't going to happen for about six years, so, how much, how detailed do we need to get before we, before final decision's made? Because certainly the input of these folks is important, but I suspect, I've done enough street projects, not bridge projects, but street projects, that what you see is not necessarily, what you see in the CIP three years ago isn't what you're going to see three years from now, and it does change. So how much detail are you looking for from the council in terms of advice?
And that's kind of what I was going to add on to even on, but if there's a version of M1 or M2, there's a lot of final design that is going to happen over the next five to six years as far as grades on driveways. We're at a very preliminary stage right now, more looking at a conceptual design and the layout, so we have some detail, certainly with elevations. But if the city would come forward with, you want a high-level fixed bridge, looking at M1 or M2 and trying to improve access to beacons, that's something certainly that we can work with and move forward in final design.
And my intent wasn't to change your mind on laying it over, but just that we don't need to get through the Nats eyelash.
I understand. I just want to clarify, this isn't for beacons, this is the whole egress for the entire Park Plaza facility with, you know, as Kurt said, a couple thousand people a day are in there sometimes, so it's a little bit more about that than beacons.
Correct, and both, both M1 and M2 looked to replicate the access that exists today. Certainly with the cul-de-sac, that one changes it a little bit. M2 does have direct access to Jackson Street, albeit at an elevation, as we explained before, seven to seven and a half feet above existing ground, but it does also maintain the one-way exit as well as Councilmember Hanson had mentioned, that exists today. So it is not eliminating the exit that exists today.
Councilmember Ford and then Wojciechowski.
Yes, I have no problem laying it over, but all I care about is making sure that we, we nail down that, hey, we want to give guidance that we want a fixed span bridge and we want to have the input that was given to us to mitigate the impact on the city center. So if we can accomplish that today by saying M1 or M2, direction from city staff and DOT to work with the property owners, I'm great with that. If to accomplish that goal, we need to lay it over, I'm fine with that too.
Councilmember Wojciechowski.
That's exactly what I was going to say. I mean, I think half of the question is, and it seems pretty, there's a consensus, but it might be good to just like put it out there, whether we're choosing the fixed or the lift. Like I said, I'm in favor of the fixed, but I think, I don't mind laying it over either as long as we're working with all these parties, but I think we can maybe come to a conclusion at least on what type of bridge.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two weeks is justifiable. I think you're hearing from a consensus up here without a vote that there's a way we're going to probably go on this and that this is, this is a compromise in some fashion. So giving the partners in that property just time to communicate with city staff in terms of needs and, and hopes for, you know, how it interacts with their property, I'm completely comfortable with, just knowing that you're probably seeing how this is probably going to unfold and to work with them in terms of, with that. I think in terms of what Mr. Bertrand shared, you know, if we can just give, as Mr. Ford alluded to, high, you know, high fixed and taking into account the concerns of a significant partner in that area, the biggest property in that space and how it impacts them, I'm confident that between the city public works representing our best interests as well as our, our taxpaying property, along with the state, they can come to, they can come to something works. I'm not an engineer and I ain't going to start grabbing the pen and drafting board here, but I'm confident you guys can figure out something that's going to work to accomplish everything, so.
And I guess I just want to, again, talk about, you know, notice and that. It appears that some of us got emails or phone calls from folks saying, oh, we didn't get notified of some of the later alternatives or other options. There was some expectation that there was going to be a group that came back and met. Whether or not that's true or not, I do see that we have a memo from staff that there was feedback from 420 Oregon, Maxon Corner, City Center, and they had expressed their preferences. So I just want to make that piece clear, that if we, you know, if we promise we're going to form a special working group, that we do follow through with that, if there are new developments that folks do get notified, because it seems like this kind of came, you know, last minute, some of these concerns. But there were multiple options through the boards and commissions for input, sustainability, bike and ped, traffic, so it's not like this hasn't been known for a while. It's been put out there for quite some time. So with that said, I do agree with the rest of the council though, that laying it over for at least two weeks will not harm the project for us to allow for some further tweaking, so I'll be supporting the motion to lay over. Anybody else? All right, please call the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Hooverhour?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Colmarry?
Aye.
Period seven.
And then James, obviously we're giving you guys direction to get with city center.
I'll have to consult with Mr. Bertrand to get some schedules worked out, because I don't think it would be appropriate to meet without him to be a part of that conversation.
Absolutely, and I didn't imply to cut you out of the deal. Thank you very much for coming.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, Council, we're at eight o'clock, but it looks like we just have a few more items here. Does anybody want to recess, or shall we just plow through?
Resess.
All right. Okay, we need a recess? All right, we'll recess five minutes.
I think the door discussion might take longer.
This local government meeting is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at ashkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at ashkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at ashkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at ashkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at ashkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at ashkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at ashkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at ashkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at ashkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at ashkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at ashkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at ashkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at ashkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at ashkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at ashkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at ashkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at ashkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page.
What you just alluded to is important for me, because we don't meet often enough, we only meet every other Tuesday. You alluded to it, but I want to be really clear. For me to support this in any way, it needs to be very crystal clear in that, in the ordinance, that the city manager has the ability to himself shut this thing down, that it does not have to wait for a council meeting to get to that point. That basically, just like creating a state of emergency, he can create one, we can shut it down, we can overrule him two weeks later if we need to, but that he has the ability, if he sees fit in his justification to shut it down, then it's built in there right away, crystal clear.
That was a very analogy that we used, that if, in the interest of public safety, it's like, I have to cut this off. So cleanup was good. I'm going to skip over boundaries, because that's the major concern. They understood our logic on the special events that we actually give the DORA the precedent over a special event. So our intent is to inform, just please understand that, and that's exactly as it's written now, the DORA would be given precedent so that there's no confusion that the DORA is operative. Now, right now, today, without any council action, a resident of our community could crack open a beer in Opera House Square and can be there, regardless of what event is going on there. So it isn't taking it... It's not as drastic a step as you think, but it'll be more... It goes back to our considerations. It's got to be legally straightforward, it's got to be enforceable. And if we're like, oh, you picked the wrong weekend and you can't be... You've crossed, you know, merit, then we got a problem. It's just that we say, it's going to be allowed, and if you're a special event, our special event coordinator is prepared to say, please be aware that on these times, it's... We're going to have this DORA, and you may want to find another location for your special event, for example.
Isn't that going to create some confusion about, I don't know, for lack of a better word, jurisdiction between... I mean, it kind of puts the farmer's market folks in an awkward position, even though they may not... They have stated that they are maintaining a neutral position. Does the fact that the DORA supersedes the farmer's market end up kind of putting the folks in the farmer's market in an awkward position?
The only thing it would mean is that somebody can walk with a drink up and down Main Street during the farmer's market. That's all it means. It doesn't mean that the DORA has some superior rights to how the farmer's market functions. They can't say, you've got to move this or move that. Farmer's market still has their permit, it's just that the DORA rule will apply through the farmer's market, unless the council changes the hours. But our concern is that whatever hours get established, we establish them, they stay in place, they don't change. This week, it's at 10:00, next week, it starts at noon, then you're going to have mass confusion, and we want to make it as simple as possible.
Councilmember Miller.
Thanks, Mayor. Mark, you said somebody can crack a beer down at the...
Public park.
Opera House Square?
Opera House Square is a public park.
But they can't do it at the Leech, because the Leech sells, so you can go...
You can go down to Menominee Park and you're allowed to bring a six-pack with your... That's in the rules.
So what about the... What about Riverwalk? Can you have a beer in the Riverwalk?
That's considered part of our park system, yes. That's where Mr. Larson pointed out, that, you know, he's one of the only places where you can, you know, you can step from a licensed establishment into a park immediately. Technically, he's right. And that's, even the city attorney just kind of said, well, technically, he's right. It's just one of those little quirks.
I never thought about...
I'm not trying to...
You know, the sundial is... No, no, I know, I absolutely know you're not, but I never thought that was a park. I just never viewed it as a park.
It's a park.
Okay, thanks.
So cups, they understood our logic, that we don't want DORA cups. I don't want our police to be cup cops. I think that would just be set up ourselves for conflicts. We have the issue about using transparent, translucent type of cups, and if they want to do promotional DORA cups that they talked about, we just want to make sure that they're easily viewable, but... And they said, oh, we can do that. So they're willing to do that. Now...
Please don't make them red Solo.
Correct. We don't want them red Solo cups, yeah, because that's not transparent or translucent. But they'll work through that issue. And then the signage, we gave a lot of ideas. The signage issue was really more about just generating ideas with some really good ideas. It's all about public education, if we're going to do that. So those are the ones. The boundary...
A nonlicensed establishment, once they discovered that that wasn't allowed, that kind of, the hour, that one hour wasn't as significant as it was originally. The dates was a concern that they expressed. We had a good discussion about that. They would like to see it through the end of the farmer's market. And I think we've identified a way that we could do that if that was okay with council. One of the things we're concerned about are events in the fall that could have, because of the university presence, that could have a negative impact. And we're looking at blocking out some specific weekends and just in advance say, these weekends are, it's not going to happen. And then we talked about signage that this is a DORA weekend and they can put it in their windows. This is, you know, not a DORA weekend, so people know that. Staffing, I'm trying, I'm kind of punting it to council a little bit. I apologize just a little, but the chief and I are very insistent that we need a police presence there for public safety. And we do not want our officers to be, my word, cup cops. We don't want people to be approaching people, is that, did you get that drink at this establishment or not? We don't want to have anything to do with that. That would just create conflict points for our police with the public. But we think it's important to have people out there. Appleton already has people out, and they don't have a DORA. They just have two officers committed to Friday and Saturday nights in the College Avenue bar corridor just to be there for enforcement purposes. And we still feel strongly about that. Bid's concerned about the cost, and, but the chief's concerned that he doesn't have this budgeted, and that could potentially be more expensive. We did talk about things we could do. The chief feels as though, through the discussions we had, that on Saturdays, the officers may not need to be there until the second shift starts, basically three o'clock to nine o'clock. So the hours are getting crunched down a little bit. But I think we're going to defer to council. And if you think they should pay for it, you need to say that. But if you feel strongly, as chief and I do, that we need to have police presence, regardless of what the argument is, that, then you can say, well, then we'll assume those costs. But we want to make sure that we don't make a mistake in a financial decision, because of a financial decision, rather than a public safety decision. And I've given the chief the assurance that if this goes through, we will have officers out there. We have to do that. That's our responsibility from a public safety standpoint. Cleanup, we had a great discussion about that. They're looking at partnering with a local organization for some cleanup, not every cleanup. But then the bid members themselves would be responsible to pick up on the areas when this group that they're lining up is not available. And we're like, that's going to be on you, because when farmer's market opens at 8:00 a.m. on Saturday, the bins need to be empty, because we know how quickly they fill up. That's just one example. But there's got to be some responsibility. And we agreed that we would, that would be an ongoing, we'll work on it and we'll address it as it comes. And I think we've got a good enough relationship with these folks that we can trust them on that. Because in the city attorney, I've talked about this. We're going to reserve the right to cut this off at any time that we're not satisfied.
How are we going to measure that? So how would that be measured? If we start with a pilot, will that be in this ordinance, a way to measure?
For example, if garbage is spewing and nobody wants to clean it up, I'm going to say from a public health and safety standpoint, it's done. And they understand that. In fact, I think they prefer that, because then I get to play the bad guy. And you know what? That's my job. I'll do that. If I see public safety or health getting compromised, is it a measure specific, Madam Mayor? No, but to quote Justice Potter Stewart, I know it when I see it. And I'll know it when I see it. And I assume that by Monday morning, I'll hear from a good number of you, as well as other residents, and we'll already know by Monday morning that if we got a problem that's going to have to get cut, we're going to chop it.
Deputy Mayor has a question.
What you just alluded to is important for me, because we don't meet often enough. We only meet every other Tuesday. You alluded to it, but I want to be really clear. For me to support this in any way, it needs to be very crystal clear in that, in the ordinance, that the city manager has the ability to himself shut this thing down, that it does not have to wait for a council meeting to get to that point. That basically, just like creating a state of emergency, he can create one, we can shut it down. We can overrule him two weeks later if we need to. But that he has the ability, if he sees fit in his justification to shut it down, then it's built in there right away. Crystal clear?
That was a very analogy that we used, that if, in the interest of public safety, it's like, I have to cut this off. So cleanup was good. I'm going to skip over boundaries, because that's the major concern. They understood our logic on the special events that, we actually give the DORA the precedent over a special event. So our intent is to inform, just please understand that, and that's exactly as it's written now. The DORA would be given precedent so that there's no confusion that the DORA is operative. Now, right now, today, without any council action, a resident of our community could crack open a beer in Opera House Square and can be there, regardless of what event is going on there. So it isn't taking it, it's not as drastic a step as you think, but it'll be more, it goes back to our considerations. It's got to be legally straightforward. It's got to be enforceable. And if we're like, oh, you picked the wrong weekend and you can't be, you've crossed, you know, you've crossed merit, then we got a problem. It's just that we say, it's going to be allowed. And if you're a special event, our special event coordinator is prepared to say, please be aware that on these times, it's, we're going to have this DORA, and you may want to find another location for your special event, for example.
Isn't that going to create some confusion about, I don't know, for lack of a better word, jurisdiction between, I mean, it kind of puts the farmer's market folks in an awkward position, even though they may not, they have stated that they are maintaining a neutral position. Does the fact that the DORA supersedes the farmer's market end up kind of putting the folks in the farmer's market in an awkward position?
The only thing it would mean is that somebody can walk with a drink up and down Main Street during the farmer's market. That's all it means. It doesn't mean that the DORA has some superior rights to how the farmer's market functions. They can't say, you've got to move this or move that. Farmer's market still has their permit. It's just that the DORA rule will apply through the farmer's market, unless the council changes the hours. But our concern is that whatever hours get established, we establish them. They stay in place. They don't change. This week it's at 10:00, next week it starts at noon. Then you're going to have mass confusion, and we want to make it as simple as possible.
Councilmember Miller.
Thanks, Mayor. Mark, you said somebody can crack a beer down at the?
Public park.
Opera House Square?
Opera House Square is a public park.
But they can't do it at the Leech, because the Leech sells. So you can go?
You can go down to Menominee Park, and you're allowed to bring a six-pack with your, that's,
So, okay. So what about the, what about Riverwalk? Can you have a beer in the Riverwalk?
That's considered part of our park system, yes. That's where Mr. Larson pointed out, that, you know, he's one of the only places where you can, you know, you can step from a licensed establishment into a park immediately. Technically, he's right. And that's, even the city attorney just kind of said, well, technically, he's right. It's just one of those little quirks.
I never, I never thought about, you know, the sundial is, no, no, I know, I absolutely know you're not, but I never thought that was a park. I just never viewed it as a park.
It's a park.
Okay, thanks.
So, cups, they understood our logic that we don't want DORA cups. I don't want our police to be cup cops. I think that would just be, set up ourselves for conflicts. We have the issue about using transparent, translucent type of cups. And if they want to do promotional DORA cups that they talked about, we just want to make sure that they're easily viewable, but, and they said, oh, we can do that. So they're willing to do that.
Please don't make them red solo.
Correct. We don't want them red solo cups, yeah. Because that's not transparent or translucent stuff. But they'll work through that issue. And then the signage, we gave a lot of ideas. The signage issue was really more about just generating ideas with some really good ideas. It's all about public education, if we're going to do that. So those are the ones. The boundary is really the tough one. And I'm certainly going to continue to work with them. I have some questions for the city attorney that I didn't have a chance to discuss with her. And it would have been inappropriate, because it was a little bit of strategizing, and I think I got to strategize with the attorney on what things we could do. But we're concerned that if we go beyond the bid boundaries and there was some comment that was made, you know, what happens next? When the pilot program's over, how do we include or exclude? And council's been reading things about, there was an issue about flying flags at city halls, and how does that relate to it? When we start saying yes, no to people, we have to have a very solid logic on why we say yes and no. It is not like, I like you and I don't like you. That isn't going to fly. And that's whether it's signage with the Gilbert, Arizona case, or this recent one with the flag. And there's so many others that potentially could come up. And this is another one. We have to be solid in our logic so that when the council makes a finding, that the finding is legally defensible. We just want to make sure. And I was concerned, because the original proposal was to go up to the 600 block. And I knew immediately when I saw that, because right across the 600 block are, there's one establishment right there at the corner of Irving. And I'm not going to do a commercial for anybody, but there's another establishment there. And sure enough, when they made the presentation to you, and I watched it, I was like, I knew it. And they added another establishment. And it's like,
They went to 700 block.
So now you jumped into the 700. So where does it end? And there's got to be a logic to it. And that's where the city attorney and I need to strategize on that, because I don't want to put the council in a position where they're being overly selective and potentially putting us at risk and letting on that.
I guess.
Did I explain that as well? She hasn't kicked me yet, so I think I'm doing okay. But seriously, you know, we just can't willy-nilly say, yes, no, yes, no. It's got to be, it's yes because of these reasons, it's no because of these other reasons, not because we don't like an establishment.
Councilmember Wojciechowski, and then I have a legal question on that.
Do you want to go first, because I have a lot of questions?
Oh, okay, all right. This is, so, DORA is kind of new to us, right? I'm generally not a fan, because there's just too many loose ends on this. But if it has to happen, if it ends up being voted on with, you know, staff recommendations, is this equal to like a Class B alcohol license special event type thing? Or what do we measure this against, or not measure, but compare this to, in terms of the other liquor licenses that operate either temporarily with events or permanent establishments? How do we fit this in the spectrum?
There is no liquor license issued for this purpose.
But it is a liquor license, in effect, for a geographic area.
No, it's selling alcohol, it's opening up the open intoxicants ordinance to allow people to carry out, but there's no changes to liquor licensing.
Okay, okay. So, second part of that legal question is, when we expanded and changed our, you know, our ordinances to allow over the pandemic, and be more relaxed with our sidewalk cafes, and when, you know, businesses have put in all these cool little side yards, including from 700 block of Main, all the way down to the river, all of those extra outdoor spaces, how is this different, other than turning the sidewalk into another establishment?
The one that you're referring to, this like the side yards and the, their licensed premise extends into those areas. So if I have a sidewalk cafe, technically, somebody could not take a beer from another establishment and sit down at my sidewalk cafe. It is part of that license premises, alcohol consumed there has to be bought there.
Okay, okay.
I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Sort of.
This is more about the consumption side, not the sales side.
Right, right.
And so we'd be relaxing the consumption.
And how again would this be different than a pub crawl that we've kind of frowned on for so many years?
You raise a valid point, Madam Mayor.
I'm just, no, I'm not, I'm not being smug. I'm literally asking what the distinction is.
That's a legitimate concern that you raised. The concern with pub crawl was that you couldn't control it, because it, the enforcement, the concern about the enforcement was, you know, once they break loose, you know, are you going to go chase somebody down the street? And the concern was that it would get to that point. That's why we had a lot of concerns. Now, we made it pretty clear to the establishments that if they did that, and they can't just wash their hands and say, oh, well, so-and-so ran off, there's nothing we can do, that could impact their license. So it generally was followed and with minimal problems with the license holder.
Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions and comments as you were going through. So I'm going to go through some of these sections. Oh, geez, now I'm forgetting one, I'm sorry. Dates. So, and this is just a personal view. I just can't help but think that we're singling out a certain group of individuals. And yes, I understand the logic behind it, but we're picking and choosing to do it during a certain time when UWO isn't in session. And I get the understanding, I do, but I can't help but think we're singling them out. I would understand if it was like, let's do it during non-winter months, you know, because that's, that could be a safety issue. But that's just the personal view, I had to say it. I am concerned a little bit about if there would be an increased police presence, but it sounds like, you kind of assured me a little bit with your comments about not being cup police. One of the things I had about the times, how that's going to work out, you know, it's, you know, someone has a cup, they're walking down the street. It's about to get, like, you know, hit nine o'clock. Is it like, immediately like, or is, you know, how is that going to work?
It's really, it's a great question for the chief, and we've talked through those things. It's really, it's like, it's getting time. You know, drink up, toss. And it's just more of an education thing. Because, yeah, for us to start being heavy-handed would defeat the whole thing, defeat the whole purpose.
And that's my concern, because that could, you know, just kind of, you know, stop the whole, you know, process behind this event if people are too afraid to be participating in it. But it sounds like that's not going to be the case. And that's just, you know,
I'm glad you mentioned that one, because one of the, some of the areas that we did get some agreement on, reluctant, but still agreement on, was we were pretty insistent that it not be allowed in the parking lots. But we're going to be common sense. It's not like you've crossed the boundary and the warning light goes on. It's more about, it's education. Hey, are you on your way to the Leech that you're going to toss it? When you walk to the, when you get to the Leech, you got to toss it. Now, technically, without the parking lots, you got to go down Main Street. You got to make a left and walk through Riverside Park.
Except for the Pedal Pub.
Except for the Pedal Pub. There's always, the state gave us that, you know, the state made that, kind of dictated that. So anyway, we're going to be practical about those things. We just don't want the parking lots to become, you know, tailgates.
Yeah, exactly.
That's why we, that's our concern there, so. But they understand that.
And that's something that, you know, like, they're in charge of already with their parking lots, you know, keeping the orders out. Special events. So would this open up the ability for, let's say, like, a licensed vendor to start selling liquor at the farmer's market, like, in the farmer's market?
No.
Okay. Because I know, I'm sure that's a concern for lots of people. Or just special events in general, because I'm sure you, there's already a process for that.
The only thing that you can do are those special Class B licenses that are, a nonprofit has to do it. So Mark and Aaron can't form a little LLC and start selling drinks.
Or your sidewalk cafes, in the case of the.
Yeah, so that's, but great. I mean, I love these questions, because now we're getting it out and having a good discussion about it.
Yeah, and I know the community cares about those. My last thing is, and it's not on here, but it's kind of about process, you know, actually, I have another one after that. But, you know, is there going to be like a registry? You know, like, what is the process that these bars go through to, you know, maybe they don't want to start with it, like, they don't want to participate in it right away, but later on, they realize, oh, maybe we do want to participate in it, you know? What's, have you thought about what that process is going to look like for people to participate?
That kind of came up with the original DORA concept that they borrowed from Ohio. But the state law allows you to leave with a sealed container. If you're in a DORA area, again, the DORA is really to allow the consumer of the product. And if they walk out on the Main Street with their sealed cup, and then they decide they want to take a sip, they may remove it at that point and take a sip in a DORA. If they did that currently, they'd be breaking the law. So this, that would, so, if, would they give somebody a can to go? They may not want to do that, and that's certainly up to them. But that's their policy. If we allow this, they can walk out on the street. What they do with that drink once they left those premises is entirely up to them.
I'm talking more about like, the business choosing to participate. Are they going to be required to notify someone that they're participating? Or is it just they get to choose?
No.
And they just?
We decided we don't.
Maybe there might be a little misunderstanding here. Are you referring to the original proposal where they said, oh, some businesses could allow in and out?
Yeah.
The non-alcohol establishments are not, as I understand it, permitted to have any come in.
You were right. That whole thing was confusing. But city attorney was pretty clear, and the state law does not allow that to happen. And so you're going to have, if you want to go into an establishment, you better have a pal there to hold your drink.
Well, but part of the discussion was, you know, you get, let's say you get the DORA cup from one bar, you go and decide to walk into another bar, if they, is it?
Cannot.
Okay, so it's only that you can bring it out on?
Only out onto the sidewalk or the street area.
Gotcha. So they would have to finish it before disposal?
You cannot, state law says you can't take an alcoholic beverage from one license to establishment to another one.
Gotcha, okay.
And you cannot take a alcoholic beverage from a, into a non-licensed premises. So it's just, it would be just the,
Gotcha, okay, thank you for that.
Be able to walk up and down the street.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification.
So at the Leech, then, is that a Class B when nonprofits rent or run the concessions there?
Right, so you can't walk in, if you want to walk from Bar 430 to the Leech, once you get to the door of the Leech, you're dropping your cup. You're done.
But I mean, the other way around, the Class B from the Leech to somewhere else.
Technically, they could leave, because they're going into a park. And the park, it's allowed at a park. And it's, and it would be in the DORA.
Somebody's going to have to do a lot of mental gymnastics that night.
By policy, the chamber doesn't allow that. You can't leave the Leech with a beer. They just say, no, you got to, you got to finish it here and drop it.
I had another question, but I can't remember, so.
Sorry.
I'm done. No, no, I can't remember, so I'm done.
Again, the idea is that we're going to be presenting an ordinance that gives you this to look from. So I just wanted to give you a little flavor of what things we were able to come to agreement on. The boundary one is the big one. We got to, yeah, I don't know where I'm going, I don't know what we're going to come back with. But if it is, it'll be, all right, it'll be up to council if we can't come to a general agreement. And you may not even agree with what we, I told you what things that the bid and staff agreed to. Council is every right to say, I don't like this feature or that feature. That's entirely up to you. But we want to make it as simple as possible, if we're giving you something to consider, that it's.
Well, and the linkage to the earlier license that was issued, you know, if that mirrors, if that geography mirrors the routes that were granted to that applicant, it seems like one could also step up Pedal Pub with that 36 ounce and continue if that's.
So the commercial quadricycle rules are completely separate from the, like, those have special rules, and I'm going to have to go back and take a look at them. But there, the statute is very clear on those, what you can and can't do.
So the DORA doesn't supersede the statute on that?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Beth, yeah, thank you for that question, because I don't have an answer for that. I mean, there's a little bit of weed issue.
Wisconsin's liquor laws are very complex and have a multi-tiered system and have a lot of exceptions to different rules. So it's, you can't always take something from one and apply it in another area, so.
So we'll work on something, and it'll be a fun time for the council to debate that. And that's going to be a big policy issue for you. So I'm certainly happy to be finished, if you're happy for me to be finished on this topic.
Yeah, we're going on nine o'clock. This has been a long time since we had a meeting this long. So we still have budget workshop. First one for CIP, July 6th, 5:00 p.m.
And we're going to have Long Range Finance with us.
Oh, that's right, with Long Range Finance.
And we'll, we'll notice that.
And then strategic planning, July 12th.
July 12th, yeah, we'll notice that as well.
Deputy Mayor.
And then I'd like council to put on their radar, potentially Tuesday, the 26th, to go into closed session afterwards for the city manager's mid-year review.
July 26th?
July 26th. Given what our end of June and early July calendar looks like for a whole lot of meetings, seems appropriate to try to put it at the end of July, as long as it works for eight schedules.
At the same time. We'll do it together on the 6th.
For a, or just a?
Just a.
Okay, and then, do we have any reports from council, the EAS, for boards and commissions? I just had a quick one. The Parks Advisory Board did vote a recommendation on the CIP for parks, which we'll see that next month. And Bike Ped had their successful bike ash event several weeks ago. That's all I have. And city manager, do you have anything?
Just the outstanding issues. Certainly happy to answer any questions. A lot of things that were discussed that were coming up tonight, so I don't have anything unless you have any questions.
Deputy Mayor.
I just have a brief, thank you. I just have a very brief question. Last one on the list, ARPA funding for non-infrastructure. You're looking at early August to let us know on where you're at?
Yeah.
How come, can you give us some, a brief 60-second answer or 30s on why waiting till then?
I have been actively meeting with the applicants for the non-infrastructure projects and having some great discussions, and I need to do some additional follow-up. I started with the, quite honestly, the larger dollar applicants, but I need to follow up with everybody. So I think I'll be able to put together a, an allocation plan. I don't intend to recommend that we allocate the whole amount, because I think they're still moving parts similar to infrastructure. Just kind of keep a little bit of our powder dry. But that would be my plan. So I just wanted to give myself a little time, but once I have a set of recommendations, I'm just going to copy all of it, so you have it.
Is there going to be a community group that looks at the scoring of this? That's independent from the applicants?
That wasn't, that wasn't the initial plan. And I'll give you the, I'll show you the applications once we get them. But, I mean, once we, you know, once I've made some recommendations. But that wasn't the direction I received from council.
As a follow-up, when you're going through these discussions with the applicants, I assume you are, but I just want to hear it. You're confirming that, one, that it's still the, whatever project, whatever the need is, is still viable, but that, two, they haven't maybe received other funding that now negates their need for that? Is that a fair assumption?
You just took a peek at my script.
Thank you, appreciate it. Just wanted to make sure, because there have been, that was one of the reasons for us, not slow-playing it, but slow-playing it was to see where other funding came in, where other grants and, you know, state and federal dollars came in to make sure that we weren't duplicating and having the biggest.
Things have changed a lot. I mean, for example, day by day.
But on the other hand, I think there was also some direction about using ARPA dollars where they could marry up and get more impact with marrying up with multiple sources or matches or things of that nature. So I think we actually saw this with our city neighborhood investment grant, you know, and the county had covered some things. But I thought for sure we gave some emphasis on those ARPA dollars being used in such a way that they could come together and have more impact.
Perhaps I missed, I thought you were saying that I was turning something over to a committee to look at.
No, I was just asking if there was a scoring committee to determine the recipients besides council.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought.
Yeah, it was a two-peat.
No, we have some criteria that we have. No, we have some criteria that we have about...
Let's remember McGraw's question.
So in terms of us working with different groups, that's part of my questions. What's the status of this project? Who else are you working with? Because I saw some, I wouldn't say duplicate, but maybe overlapping and, you know, looking for an opportunity. Shouldn't you be working together? Why did you ask for something? And so there are a few little things that are there that, and some groups say, I'm working with Group A on this. And, oh, well, let me talk, and Group B's also applied. Those are the types of things I'm trying to work through. And because of all, everything that's changed, I mean, one of my questions is, did you get PPP money to offset some of these losses? Because if you got PPP money to offset those, these losses, then I, then I think it's appropriate that you know about that because maybe their needs aren't as great as, say, somebody, I didn't qualify for PPP. And there are some groups that said, we didn't qualify for PPP. And I think it's appropriate that we take a harder look at those who weren't able to take advantage of that. But that's why I'm taking a little more time. I think that was, that was the initial question. So my goal is to get it there, but once I have some recommendations, I'll get it out. And, you know, and even the press, I think, is interested. What, eventually, what are you going to do? But they have, some have changed, I will tell you. Because, oh, well, last year, we thought it was this. Now that we've done this, here's what's changed. And so these are great discussions. I'm learning a lot how some of our partners are working.
Just to follow up then, too, on the other outstanding issue. Obviously, this is the type of year we're getting, we're hearing from a number of people on the special assessments topic as well. When we can expect to see that discussion come back to council?
I think it's, city attorney and I have talked, she's going to be talking with the attorney who is representing the town of Buchanan in their lawsuit. And I spoke with League Insurance folks last week at my conference about how it's going with the city of Pewalki and how the city of Pewalki is probably going to be more the indicator of how it applies to us because we're both cities and we're both using it to replace special assessments. I wouldn't necessarily take the Buchanan case as some indicator of what's going to happen, primarily because the judge acknowledged in his opinion that, oh, the Court of Appeals is going to decide this anyway. So it was kind of a drop-back tenant punt, in my opinion. I don't know what, what this, she'll just, just be quiet about it, but I'll say it. I think he dropped back ten and punted. She may have to go before a judge of the future, so she didn't want to, she didn't want to blow that. But I'll say it.
So we're hoping for another update, then, by June 28th?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. I think once Lynn's going to be at a conference this week, and she may actually run into some of those people at that conference.
All right. Just a reminder to other folks, I will not be here on June 28th, so have fun.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor, thank you.
All right, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.